I was just, I'm expecting a friendly audience, you know. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting of the City of Bloomington to council to order, and I'll ask Madam Clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Currents?
Here.
Councilmember Boland?
Here.
Councilmember Martin? Councilmember Danenberger?
Here.
Councilmember Becker?
Here.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Krempler?
Here.
Mayor Milawonblay?
Here. And Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
We do. We have ten people registered to speak, and one will speak electronically. And we did receive one emailed public comment that was from Zach Carlson, and it was provided to you earlier by email. And after you read your statement, we'll first start with Mark Adams, and then to follow, Noah Tang.
Okay, awesome. Public comment is an opportunity for speakers to provide their views and feedback to the city council. It is also an opportunity for the city council to hear, to listen and hear diverse points of view. To maximize the impact of public comment and show respect for the expression of all views, speakers should maintain civility and focus on city issues. Speakers must identify themselves for the record but are not required to give their address. Each speaker is given the floor for three minutes, and the council does not respond or engage in debate. Any speaker that engages in threatening or disorderly behavior will be deemed out of order, and their time ceased.
All right, first up, Mark Adams, please, and then to follow will be Noah Tang.
Hello, City Council. My name is Mark Adams. I live in Ward Eight here in Bloomington. I'm here tonight to share my thoughts on parking requirements for housing development. Multiple sources, including Illinois Housing Development Authority, McLean County Regional Planning Commission, and our local Housing Assistance Coalition, have all effectively proven that, just in case you don't know, Bloomington Normal does face a growing affordable housing crisis. Between 2021 and 2023, the US Federal Finance, the US Federal Housing Finance Agency noted that the housing price index for Bloomington Normal has increased thirty-nine percent in those two short years. Middle-class residents such as myself and my wife are now dealing with rising housing costs and worried about housing affordability. The unhoused population as well continues to grow, and the systemic factors that contribute to lack of affordable housing have remained under addressed. I'm fully aware that government has its limitations, as all things should. Although the City of Bloomington cannot wave a match to fix this issue, I'm fully aware, the city does have a moral obligation to alleviate high housing development costs by making zoning ordinances more flexible. A newly proposed parking buffer for parking garages and lots will help make our downtown more pedestrian-friendly and will lower the cost of housing in the long term, which is perfectly aligned with the exciting and promising streetscape plan that I fully support. However, parking requirements do reduce the land available for housing, increases congestion on roads, and adds greenhouse gases with further reliance on vehicles. I urge you to consider in the intermediate to eliminate parking minimum requirements altogether. The bottom line is that we must lower housing development costs, especially for multifamily projects, through eliminating parking requirements. This can and will further lower housing costs that are transferred to occupants later. Let's work to keep our city an affordably safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Next up is Noah Tang, and then to follow will be Anthony Crispin.
Sorry, a little tall for this, Mark. My name is Noah Tang. I live in Cody's Ward. I am a history teacher at Bloomington High School and a very concerned citizen. I really don't want to copy and paste all of what Mark just said, but one of the very important barriers to housing development, especially affordable housing development, is the obsessive parking minimum requirement. So I really, I actually went to go speak in front of the Planning Commission earlier in this month to support the proposed changes to the parking minimum requirements around downtown, but I say that those do not go far enough. Hundreds of towns across the entire country have also either reduced or completely eliminated their parking minimum mandates, at least downtown, and some even throughout the entire city. Now, when we're talking about the streetscape plan in downtown, I think it's extremely important that it's only part of downtown revival. Parking is extremely important. When we're looking at a lot of these lots on Main Street, right next to the Frontier Building, we know that Frontier owns several mostly empty lots during the day, really underutilized for commercial uses. I think that would be really good for the city to continue conversations with Frontier, to try to acquire those properties for redevelopment. Also, talking about the streetscape plans, I just learned, and I actually visited Decatur actually quite recently. You know, the city manager, under his time there in Decatur as well, I think the Assistant City Manager, I went down there, and they have a really beautiful revitalized downtown. And I really appreciate what you guys are doing here as well, and I really'd like to see that here in Bloomington. Because looking at what Decatur has done, especially on Merchant Street, with the curb bumpouts as well as enhanced public realm, I think that would really, really help revitalize downtown Bloomington as well. And I think you of all people should know that. So, in sum, really, instead of just looking at this project as a one-off, we really also need to take a holistic approach to downtown revitalization. So including parking minimums, looking at the building codes for revitalizing buildings that have unused upper floors. And, yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next?
All right, next up, we have Anthony Crispin, and then to follow will be Fred Woolrab.
Mike check? All right. My name is Anthony Crispin. I live in Ward Four, and today I'm here to talk about minimum parking requirements. I know we're not talking about that tonight, but we are going to be talking about that next week. My colleagues up here have talked about it in the context of housing, but I would like to shift gears a little bit and talk about it in the context of small business creation. Now, I'm gonna go further than them, and I'm gonna say, the City of Bloomington should eliminate all off-street parking requirements for all land uses. I know that's a, sounds like a radical idea. I promise it's not. Just hear me out. So, the City of Bloomington itself has talked about the importance of small business, of local entrepreneurship, local business creation. It is a good way for people to lift themselves up out of poverty, for people who are middle-class, move to higher classes. Starting a small business really is part of the American dream. It's in the psyche of what we believe in, is the ability to lift yourself up. And the city itself has acknowledged this in its comprehensive plan. The City of Bloomington has identified that it aims to, aims towards developing a culture of entrepreneurship and providing resources to promote new and innovative businesses through public-private partnerships in Bloomington and Normal. Extending that concept, the plan objectives seek to position Bloomington as a business-friendly community. Of particular interest is an initiative to examine the city's regulatory and permitting practices, and reduce barriers to business identified in development review and approval. And it specifically aims to identify and remove barriers to establishing startup businesses within the city. Now, one of the biggest obstacles that small business owners have in creating small businesses is minimum parking requirements. For example, the city right now mandates that any retail business has one parking space per two-hundred-and-fifty feet of gross floor area. Restaurants need one space per one-hundred square feet of gross floor area, and restaurants with a drive-thru need one space per fifty square feet of floor area. To put that into perspective, pop-up, you guys know Pop-Up Chicken Shop? I love it. I had it for lunch today. But they have a square feet of, how much is it? Four thousand five hundred of gross floor area, and they need to provide forty-five parking spots. If you measure that out, in the parking lot of Pop-Up Chicken Shop, you can add five more identical pop-up chicken shops. We are spreading out at a unsustainable rate. This was fine when money was infinite, when these ordinances were introduced, when we thought minimum parking requirements were a good idea. But we are now in a situation where we can, we need to be a little more cautious of what we're doing with our land. We cannot keep infinitely expanding outwards. No one is forcing us to have minimum parking requirements, but in the context of small business, it is one of the biggest barriers. Land is not free, and forcing small business owners to essentially buy five times the land they would usually need is not the way we need to go. So I would encourage you all to research this by the next meeting, and I'll be here for it to talk about it next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
All right, next up, we have Fred Woolrab, and then to follow will be Robert Verasella.
I wasn't really planning on talking tonight, but I would, I'm here to support the downtown redevelopment ideas. And if anybody wants to have a longer conversation with me, feel free to get ahold of me, and I would be glad to meet you somewhere and have a conversation.
That's it? Thank you. Next?
All right, so, next up will be Robert Verasella.
Hi, my name's Robert Verasella. I'm a business partner with Fred. We're property owners, contractors, developers. Fred's family's been involved in downtown since his grandfather. They've owned probably as many or more buildings than anyone downtown. I own nine buildings. I've been affiliated with downtown for twenty-five years. I've been on DBA, different task force. I'm here to support the plan, but would like to talk about a couple things. I've taken some surveys on kind of the top three things that people would like to see happen downtown. First and foremost being safety. Many people don't feel safe downtown. There's, you know, around twenty to thirty people that wander the streets downtown and give the downtown a very unsafe feeling. So I think that's something that we need to address. Parking has always been an issue, and cleanliness and landscape, those are things that I think need to be worked on. I think having the business owners kind of in charge of cleaning and doing landscaping isn't the best idea. There's been multiple old plans like this that have been presented that I've been part of, and it seems like we get to this point, and then we don't carry it through to the next step. And so, if this plan is approved, I would like to see how this is gonna be implemented, as far as who's gonna be in charge, like a point person or a manager, to see that everything gets followed through. It would be nice to see a TIF happen downtown for larger projects. We have, you know, multiple Fortune 500 companies coming into town, and I feel like we need to get our act together a little bit more than we are now. I think the safety, as far as my perspective, I'm downtown every day, and in the last couple of years, it just seems like the safety aspect is getting worse, as far as, not necessarily crime, but just being downtown and walking down the sidewalks and just feeling like you're not gonna get mugged. My wife owns Velvet Daisy, which was formerly Gigi Bottega, and multiple customers come in and express how they want to come downtown, but just the safety aspect is concerning. So I think it's time to get this plan done and see it followed all the way through. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next up, we'll have Frankie Pelusi, and then to follow, Matt Strup.
Frankie?
All right, next up, we'll have Matt Strup.
Hi, my name's Matt Strup. I live here in McLean County. So, I am the president of IBW here in town. I'm gonna speak on behalf of Mark and in support of the elimination of the minimum parking standards. So, IBW, with Electricians Union, for anybody that doesn't know that, we employ around four hundred members here in McLean County, and I'm gonna speak towards that on the worker's side of things. So, the minimum parking standards obviously increases the cost of affordable housing, which affordable housing is what we need right now. Like, right now, we have the housing shortage, and we actually have quite a few workers here in this community that commute every day, and because there's nowhere to live here in town. And so, increasing the affordable housing here would actually allow for us to keep our tax dollars here. So I think any kind of tool that we use to keep the local workforce here, not living in other communities as Peoria, or Champagne, Decatur, would be better for us all. It would also help. I know a lot of bigger businesses look at what kind of housing we have in our communities, and if we have housing shortages, that kind of tend to look the other way when it comes to a community. So, we want to try to lure more workers and more businesses here, and I think having the best tools available for affordable housing is the way to go. Thanks.
Thank you. Next?
All right, and next up will be Matt Burgess, and then to follow, Patrick Hoven. Matt Burgess? Okay, last will be Patrick Hoven to speak in person, and then as of right now, we do have Georgine Chisel registered to speak electronically or remotely, but she's not on, so there could be one other.
Hello, Patrick Hoven, CEO of your Bloomington Normal Economic Development Council. I'm also a Bloomington resident. I'm here in favor, to speak in favor of the downtown redevelopment. In economic development, we work with a lot of site selectors. Businesses hire site selectors in order to find the next place to expand or bring in a new business. Recently, Peoria hosted a site selection conference, brought in site selectors, and asked them, what should we do in order for you guys to bring us more businesses? They said, fix your downtown. So I'm very happy that we're ahead of the game here, that you guys are on the right track. This is about quality of place, and if you have quality of place and you increase your quality of life, if you have quality of life, we can retain talent, then hopefully build a place that our kids want to come home to. So for us, this is a major driver in economic development. This is the heart of our community, a lot of investment, and I also heard a lot of potential for more residential development, which, as you know, we have a housing issue. So I think that this is gonna be a good start to take care of the heart of the community, and also increase foot traffic down here, which all the retailers like as well. So this will be an economic driver. Thanks.
Thank you. Next?
All right, and that's the rest of public comment for this evening, as Georgine was not online.
Okay, so that's good. Thank you. We're gonna move on to the consent agenda, and is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second? Okay, a motion by Councilmember Boland, second by Councilmember Hendricks. And are we doing electronic?
Councilmember Hendricks?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, passes are no nays to pronounce. And now we're gonna move on to the regular agenda, a presentation of the downtown streetscape draft final design report, as requested by the Administration Department. And I'm gonna turn it over to City Manager Gleason for some introductory remarks, and then we'll pass it along to the other speakers.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and to the community. Truly an exciting night to be having this discussion. I love being a part of an organization, a community, where there's been these longstanding conversations, and the library was one. O'Neill Pool was another one. The Colosseum was another one. And then hopefully, here in the very near future, we're gonna be checking another box with a very longstanding conversation about our downtown. So about a year and a half ago, a little bit more than a year, council approved the downtown streetscape design work, the study itself. Crawford Miller, Crawford Murray Tiller, Tilly, CMT, how's that, was hired. And we have the privilege of being able to work with Mike Sewell. And Mike is a member of this community, so it's a lot more than just a company that he works for. So I guess that's a thank you, Mike, before you even get up here. And then we have Deputy City Manager Billy Tyus, who really has been the point person within the organization, working on this, very proud of the work and the presentation that's going to occur tonight. Also, the Steering Committee, when we had outreach, you know, this exhaustive outreach and the kind of conversations and, you know, input that came back, very proud of that component of this. It's critical to put this council on the firmest of ground when they make some very tough decisions. And there's gonna be several decisions come before this council regarding this topic. So where's the Steering Committee at? Actually, I'd like you to stand up if you don't mind. And thank you very much. I don't mind a round of applause at this point. Before I turn this over to Mike and to the Deputy City Manager, you know, listen to several things here. You know, one, while we're talking about trying to improve the downtown, a longstanding conversation, you know, there's been iterations of this, as one of the public commenters was talking about, but I am confident that this is not gonna be a study that collects dust on a shelf. This is going to be a phased approach, if adopted. There are gonna be several decisions for council to make. The success of one phase will drive the completion of the next phase. And another thing that I want the community to really listen to, you know, while we're trying to talk about and improve downtown more walkable, this is an infrastructure project, and excited for the community to hear a little bit more about that. I'm trying to think anything else that I said I was gonna say. And just truly, truly excited about this. This, this is, I'm gonna go back to the community outreach and the community input. This is one where, you know, we were sort of holding our breath, to be quite honest, you know, to see what kind of engagement the community would have. And you have more than answered the call with the public forums, with the website that was stood up, the surveys that have been asked. So very excited to turn the floor over to Mike and Billy, and I'll do it at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Manager, and members of City Council. Again, it seems like we've used the term excited a lot in the last several months, frankly, for a lot of different things happening in this community. And this is another one, frankly. As the manager said, we, this, what you're, what's happening tonight is the presentation of a report that's been a year and a half plus in the making. That year and a half, there was a lot of work that went into it, lots of public input, et cetera, et cetera. It's months of meetings with advocacy groups, groups like the biking community, the arts community, WBRP, Livesil, and others. Lots of conversations with social or service clubs, et cetera, et cetera, about this project, the possibility of this project. Consultation with IDOT and utility companies, lots of behind-the-scenes work to look at those things that perhaps aren't as exciting to people, but that matter for a project like this. Lots of input, the manager mentioned, stood up a website, and thousands of clicks on the site, and understanding that clicks can be misleading, frankly. But we also had lots of active users of the site, and also people who provided comments, et cetera, et cetera. I know that matters. The plan that you have been presented with as a, with as a draft, and that we're gonna walk through a little bit tonight, is what the public has said they want to see, if you choose to put forward a roadmap for rehabilitating and reinvesting in our downtown. Now, use the term rehabilitate, not disrespectfully. We've got a great downtown, lots of historic character, lots of great businesses, lots of great people, lots of great spaces. But I think we can all acknowledge that it needs a little love, frankly, and it needs some investment in order to make it to continue to become the downtown that we want to see. And we've heard that from people. We've talked a lot about, with streetscape, the kind of things you see above ground, the lighting, the landscaping, creating the new outdoor spaces, et cetera, et cetera, places for outdoor dining, those kinds of things. But I want to say, this project is just, just as important as that, is that this is an infrastructure project, and a significant portion of the investment is, would be in infrastructure, traditional infrastructure. The program includes fourteen-point-six million dollars in fixing aging sewers and water mains, and separating combined sewers, infrastructure. We've talked about the need for stormwater detention to help with flooding. A large portion of this project is related to stormwater detention that helps with flooding both downtown and other part, and in other parts of our community. Again, infrastructure. There's thirty million dollars plus that is outlined in this plan for street reconstruction and repaving. Again, infrastructure, traditional infrastructure that matters to this community, and that this downtown deserves just as other parts of the community does. We know that there will be people to that point, and it's a great question, who will say, we need to why do this? We need to spend this money in other parts of the community. My answer to that question would be, we can, and we are, and we will. We can do both and do them both well. As an example, and I know these are just numbers, but they're real numbers. We will, we have proposed in next year's budget, spending sixty-seven-point-one million dollars in streets and stormwater and sewer and water projects outside of the downtown. That number includes ten million dollars on streets and sidewalks. We always hear, we need to invest in our streets, we need to invest in our sidewalks. Well, again, that sixty-seven-point-one million dollars that I talk about includes ten million, ten million dollars for streets and sidewalks. That number grows to forty million dollars on streets and sidewalks over the next four years. So again, we are investing in other parts of our community outside of the downtown. Those amounts don't include the hundred million dollars plus that IDOT has said they plan to invest in the Bloomington community over the next year plus, again, on projects that are important to us. We've talked a lot about Market Street over the years being the entrance to our community. IDOT is planning to do work to improve Market Street. There is improvements planned for Route Nine, Empire, and other streets as part of IDOT's plan next year. So again, it's a great question. We need investment in other parts of the community, and I, again, I would emphatically say that we are doing that work in addition to this, if you would approve this plan going forward. This is a big generational project, and we've said that before. But I think it's worth saying that by supporting the plan that you're here more about today, there are still steps along the way where there will be approvals. This is a phased plan going forward. And again, every phase would come before you for consideration and approval. And so, I think it's worth, again, while we want to see the big picture, and we're hopeful that all of these things happen going forward, again, to be clear, this council has checkpoints, more than checkpoints, but opportunities to see and approve those projects as they come forward in the future. Again, so I encourage people to look at this in phases. And so, the other thing I'll add is, we mentioned infrastructure, and Mike and his team will talk a little bit more about that in more detail going forward. But a lot of that work is work that we're going to have to do anyway. You know, some of the work that we talk about needing to do going forward as it relates to sewers downtown and water mains downtown, is work that we're going to need to do going forward anyway. And so, I think it's worth mentioning that. And one of the things that we're going to be doing is looking at, perhaps, not separating that out necessarily, but giving you an idea as we go forward of those differences, you know. But I think it's worth mentioning that this is work that we're gonna need to do anyway, a lot of it. And so, what will happen tonight is that, Mike Sewell, and hopefully, Mike, you can introduce the rest of the folks who are with you tonight, will walk through sort of what is being proposed. You'll have a chance going forward to take a look at the draft document. If you have any questions coming up over the next several weeks, a couple of weeks, we'll be available to answer those questions. Again, there will be a vote in the very near future in terms of this plan. And again, the other thing I'll mention is that, we talk a lot about funding and going out and receiving outside funding. One of the first things you need to do that to go after grants is to have a plan for that. That's what this is. This is a plan to be able to say, this is what we propose to do. I think I said to some of you last week, you know, grant providers don't deal very well in ideas. They want a plan for what you're going to do. So this plan gives us that as well. Really quickly, Mike, if you want to come forward, Mike Sewell, who was a project leader with Crawford Murphy Tilly, CMT, and the rest of the design team. And the other thing I want to say is that, thank you to the Steering Committee, some of which were here tonight and who stood up. There are also a number of other people who are a part of that committee who couldn't be here tonight. So I thought it was worth mentioning that, and we really, really, really appreciate your support of this, your allowing us to bounce ideas off of you and talk about what's being proposed, et cetera, et cetera, and to help us. And so with that, Mike, go for it. And so with that, Mike, go for it.
Figured you guys were sick of hearing from me, so I brought two guys to help me out with this presentation. To my right is Chris Stritzel. He is our project principal with Crawford Murphy and Tilly. You're close to him. And to my left is Neil Brumlevy with Massey and Associates, landscape architect.
Okay, excuse me. Could you, right here, Mayor? Could you speak into the microphone a little bit more so people could hear you?
Yeah. Is this better?
Yes, much better. Thank you.
Guys, before I jump in, if I could, I'd like to echo Tim, your gratitude to the steering committee. Guys, you are tremendous to work with, provided great insight, helped us with some key decision points. And we're just a delight to work with and we really appreciate what you guys offered. So our team is privileged to provide you guys with the final presentation for this Downtown for Everyone Streetscape project. This will not be a deep dive. We did that with you the other day. Really, the purpose of this presentation is to, to highlight the ways in which this streetscape project is going to impact not just downtown Bloomington, but really as we invest and elevate downtown Bloomington, how it becomes an even greater asset for the broader community. Next slide. So as you guys have started to take a look at the reports that we've given you, you might recall that we start out by saying that the downtown project is very, very large in its scope. But really, there's four characteristics that consistently characterize the, the, all the improvements that we're proposing. And so we're going to go through each of those with you. Next slide, please. So we'll start out by talking about how the style of the streetscape project, and that's the look and the feel of downtown. How we designed it in a way to create a defining experience for downtown. Next slide. Billy talked about the public input that we had. And one of the key decision points that our team had that we wanted to hear from the public on is, well, what, what should the style be? What should the look and feel be? And we, we asked the public, do you want something that's more traditional? Do you want something that's modern? And the public overwhelmingly said they wanted a hybrid style. So that ended up being sort of a Goldilocks version between the two where we, we are creating a bold new look for downtown while still being respectful of the historic architecture that's incompatible with, with all the, the older buildings in downtown. And so the result of that is a streetscape where this isn't going to look like every other streetscape in the area. It's going to provide downtown Bloomington its own unique identity. And in that picture there, you see kind of a pulled out version, you start to see that style. And then the, the next slide, if you would. Now we're down at street level and you can kind of see that style i- in more detail. And one of the things to emphasize or the important aspects of the style is that we are draping it, so to speak, over all the improvements that we're doing downtown. Because something that seems to be lacking right now is a consistent, consistent identity, something that uniformly pulls everything together. And so we wanted a style where no matter where you are, you have this sense of place that I am, okay, I, I'm in downtown Bloomington. Next, please. I mentioned wanting to be respectful to the historic architecture. We didn't want to do anything that was jarring or incompatible with that. And one of the ways we do that is just with selection of colors. And so you can see there that selection of pavers that are going to be down near the sidewalk, sidewalk level. And the, the color selection there, it's kind of a rich blend of reds and grays and, and the tans and all of those were selected because they, they mimic the colors of the buildings and it reflects it down into the street. Next, please. Another way we do this is by recreating a lot of the, the geometric shapes that are found in the downtown buildings. The, you, you see a picture here, two pictures that include what's called a Roman arch. It's kind of a semi circle. And this is actually a very prominent architectural element throughout the buildings of downtown. Not all of them, but a, a lot of them. And so we have quite a few streetscaping elements that recreate this, even all the way down to the selection of the, the bike racks. We have that shape. And so really, all these different elements serve to give, create a style that for downtown Bloomington provides a cohesive identity and one that is unique for Bloomington. Next slide.
And one of the second key principles is the streetscape is inclusive. And inclusive, in this sense, means a lot of different things. There's a lot of different ways to be inclusive in a streetscape design. We go to the next slide, please. So one way, and probably the most visible, is making sure that everything downtown is accessible to, to visitors, to residents, to patrons, to the businesses. So that includes making sure at each building entryway, we have accessible entrances. That's done in a number of different ways, but again, providing that accessibility that businesses need. And the city's even looking into ways and exploring ideas, not only to make it accessible on the outside, but you know, coming into the inside, are there ways to also make businesses on the inside accessible as well? Next slide. Another inclusiveness is not only providing for people that, that drive downtown, but that bike downtown or walk downtown or bus downtown to, to make it a very comfortable experience and include everyone, whether you have a vehicle or whether your, your mode of transportation is bicycle. You are welcomed and encouraged into the downtown area and you feel very comfortable using that downtown. Next slide. And then also just connectivity, you know, making sure that people can access the downtown, providing better connectivity to the neighborhoods beyond, encouraging people to use the space downtown. And so that's done, you know, in a section you see there of, of reducing the lane width to make pedestrian crossings more comfortable. Again, providing that connectivity into the core areas from the surrounding neighborhoods. Next slide. Also trying to encourage all demographics to use the downtown. And so there's outside spaces that are being designed for events, for family friendly parades, for concerts that would bring in a wide range of people, all ages, all abilities to, to utilize the downtown. So encouraging everyone and being inclusive in the sense of, of trying to capture the whole population and area. Next slide. And finally, inclusive in the sense of during this design process, trying to get input from everyone that we possibly could, listening to that input and then incorporating it into the plan. And so, you know, two public open houses were held, five stakeholder meetings, countless, countless other meetings with different organizations and groups to hammer out some details and come up with a design that, that was not our design, but we listened to, to the residents, to everyone's input, and then we tried to include that in the streetscape design.
Next slide, please. So, you know, we heard loud and clear very early on in this project that our, the, the design team and the city needed to be responsible with, specifically as it, you know, relates to the using taxpayers' money. So what, what does that mean for us? Next slide, please. For starters, it was important for our team and the city staff to be mindful of future generations. So we wanted to implement sustainable solutions into our design by including such items as EV charging stations, reduced energy efficient lighting and sustainable materials. Next slide, please. But our, our team also had to be mindful of the past. We worked closely with the city staff to develop a replacement program for the aging utility infrastructure. Any sanitary main that has not been rehabilitated previously will be relined or replaced as part of this project. Any water main with a life expectancy less than twenty years will be replaced as part of this project. All lead service lines within the project corridor will be replaced as part of this project. I need to say the word infrastructure a few times, right, Billy? But in, but in total, over two miles of water main will be replaced and over one mile of sanitary sewer will be relined as part of this project. But we don't, we're not stopping there. We also are providing infrastructure for future fiber and security accommodations, which we believe is critical for economic development of the downtown. Next slide, please. We also understood that both flooding and combined sewer overflows were a major concern. This project will implement stormwater solutions that will help reduce flooding, not only in downtown, but also on the west side. We are also recommending and basically requiring that all combined sewers throughout the project corridor will be, will be separated. In total, over two miles of combined sewers will be separated as part of this project. Next slide, please. We knew from the beginning that this investment was more than just a beautification. With the adoption of this plan, the city is committing approximately thirty nine cents of every dollar spent to go towards infrastructure replacement. We know that this is money that would, part of this money would be spent regardless on rehabilitating streets and other pieces of infrastructure downtown. In total, almost three miles of city streets are going to be rehabilitated during this project. Next slide, please. We were also determined to, you know, improve both traffic and pedestrian safety. On the left, you'll see an opportunity that we identified early on where there were three partial intersections that were very close in proximity to each other. The plan on the right is the proposed realignment of, of one of those intersections into a complete four, four-way, four-way signalized intersection that reduces the number of conflict points on US fifty-one while increasing the, the added benefit of the increased parking in front of the BCPA, which is, which is desperately needed. Next slide, please. We also wanted this design to be timeless. You're going to hear a lot about pavers over the next probably several weeks. But the, the pavers you see on the screen are actually clay fired pavers. That, that is important because they are extremely durable. They are fade resistant, so they don't fade in the sun. And, and they're also standard sizes, which are, which makes it easy for the city to replace and not only replace, but match those in the future should they need to have replacement bricks. Next slide, please. Lastly, the last piece of responsible is the phasing plan. We spent a lot of time developing this phasing plan because we knew it was going to be a critical piece to the success, success of this project. Our team and staff knew that the initial projects had to be impactful, but we also had to respect the businesses and the patrons that were using downtown. We also had to coordinate with ongoing projects by other entities, such as the transit center project or IDOT's reconstruction of Route Nine and/or US fifty-one. We believe what you see on the screen is the perfect blend of both moving the needle and maintaining critical functions for the city's downtown lifestyle that exists today.
Next slide, please. So finally, the fourth characteristic is that the streetscape is fun. And that is critical to creating the, the urban energy that attracts visitors and residents and businesses to downtown. You have to be able to have a good time downtown. And certainly, that is, that is the, the case now, but we have some ideas of how we think we can make that even better. Next slide, please. So we are establishing several new venues for outdoor concerts. You see a picture here of, this would be on the north side of the, the old courthouse building. And I, I just want to point out that, that you see that Roman arch there, the use of that LED band, band structure there. Next slide. It, it's also important to create active open spaces if you want to attract a lot of people. And so we did this in a number of places that, that didn't even exist. So for example, the North Main Plaza there, right now, that is at the north end of Main Street where there currently, there's two kind of awkward parking lots. And so the, the design there is to keep the parking for most of the time, but you can raise some retractable bollards and close that space for events like a bags tournament that's shown there, for example. Next slide. Having lawn space is important for a number of events and we were able to expand that in downtown, particularly the Lincoln Park lawn that's right there in front of the BCPA. This is related to the, the intersection realignment that Chris was just talking about. And then we, our team also has kind of a reimagining of Withers Park, using that with a lot more outdoor games, permanent fixtures, things, things like that. And I, I have to tip my cap to Billy because one thing that he really challenged our team is to think of things that will attract people, not just the usual people coming to eat or people coming to shop downtown, but what other reasons do people have to come downtown? And so you, you're seeing some of that in, in these designs. Next, please. And another example of, of what could draw people, really not even just from Bloomington Normal, but if it's well programmed regionally, would be the video projection shows that we've discussed before. Next, please. It's important not to overlook the inclusion of public art in downtown. That has a huge impact on the, the energizing the, the environment of downtown and attracting people. So for example, in the, the upper right picture there shows a photo op and, and that can be very popular. So public art can be building murals and it can be sculptures. Next. And actually, I'd be remiss if I didn't give Doug Johnson some special credit for that section of the report. Doug, if you don't know, is the executive director of the McLean County Art Center. And he had wonderful suggestions and almost all the credit for that part of the report goes to, to him, not me. So we will have giant musical chests downtown. And that was also a great idea of, I have to share the story real quick of council member Ward. Brought this up when we met on Friday, this would be a great thing to have downtown. So I was really excited to show her that this was already in the plan. And there are also many locations downtown where we can provide sculptures. And this is not the, the hands-off variety. This is the, the kind where people of all ages are encouraged to, to interact with it, get your picture taken with it, kids can climb on it, that kind of thing. Next. Okay, so we're going to wrap up just talking about the costs that are involved because that's obviously an important part of all of this. There's a couple of things I wanted to say about this. You can see the figures that are involved there. First, just to provide some context. So my understanding, not that we're looking to compare ourselves to Town and Normal, but they've invested, they will have invested over a hundred million dollars in their uptown. And that's for a footprint that's a lot smaller than ours. And the, the city of Rockford, which is not that much bigger than Bloomington, is getting ready to invest four hundred million dollars in their downtown. So that's not to say that these are not significant numbers here, but it's to emphasize that they're really quite reasonable for what you're getting. And the second thing is to, to kind of break down these numbers a little bit more is, has kind of been alluded to already tonight. So if you look at that downtown core program, that's approximately a sixty million dollar program, of which a full twenty million dollars is, is included in the, the, the infrastructure that you're going to have to replace someday eventually, the, what Chris was talking about, the streets and the combined sewer separation and all of that. So that leaves you with forty million dollars. And if you divide that by the six, the six projects, and you know, I don't know if you're going to end up doing one of these a year, but that ends up being about six and a half million dollars. So it's easy to perhaps get overwhelmed by all of those numbers at first, but that's, that is actually a pretty small percentage of the city's annual budget when you think about it that way. And Councilman Becker, I completely plagiarized your financial analysis there. You, you went through that with us the other day and it was so helpful. I, I just wanted to share it with the rest of the group. So thank you for that. Next slide. That's all we have for our presentation, but. That's all we have for our presentation, but we're we're eager to hear what questions or comments you guys have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have questions? So I see Councilmember Crumpler.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mayor. You said there will be a lot of conversations about pavers in the next few weeks. I wondered, you know, will pavers be installed at a height that's accessible to our residents who use a wheelchair to travel through downtown? I know I've talked to leaders in the community who feel like there's a whole, the whole group of people who don't come down here because of the lack of accessibility. And could you speak to that, please?
Pavers would all be accessible surfaces, so including the permeable pavers. I know that's been a concern of other communities as well. And if we keep that opening, joint opening less than a half an inch, we are within the accessibility codes. But that would be a critical thing with, um, with all the pavers that are being installed to make those accessible surfaces.
I'm sorry, and Mike, can you or someone on your team speak to the difference between the pavers being proposed and what perhaps others have seen in other places with regards to those pavers? This one being a stronger, more durable extra level of paper, for lack of a better way to say it?
Yeah, I could talk, talk through that. So, a lot of other communities that you see do use a precast concrete paver. What happens with that, as Chris mentioned, you know, the color fades over time. Salt takes a terrible toll on concrete. And so with heavy salt use for cleaning streets, that's a major factor. And so your traditional clay brick paver that's been used, you know, hundreds of years ago in a four by eight size holds up very well. And we found in other communities too, if you try to introduce a different, unique design or shape, what we're finding right now in the city of Springfield is they no longer manufacture that paver. So, another reason for the selection of a traditional four by eight clay brick paver was longevity, but also replacement, uh, cost factor as well.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Andrews.
First, I just want to take a moment to thank, yeah, the stakeholders and the design team and of course, city staff for this amazing plan. And I'll save my full support comments for when we approve this thing, hopefully in April. But I would be remiss not to ask as representative for downtown, the two things that I hear most often. Could you speak a little bit to plans for garbage and trash and and that situation and then obviously parking as well?
So I'll start with garbage. Part of the challenges, and I'm sure I'm not telling you anything you don't already know, is not so much the what I'd, what I'd call the pedestrian trash, people that are walking down the street that you need a place to ditch your Starbucks cup. But it's, it's, uh, the residences right now, as I understand it, I think it's Tuesdays, they're allowed to set their trash out after six PM and then it's supposed to be picked up on Wednesdays around six AM. It's something like that. And the challenge often happens that people are putting their trash out too early, or they're putting it out too late, or they're putting it in and not in contained bags, and so it's spilling out everywhere. There's also issues with small businesses that that are putting their trash in these, the the containers that are really just meant to be for the the regular pedestrian use. So those are over capacity and spilling out. And so all of it together, that's, that, those are the contributions to the garbage issue that you have right now. So explain all that just so that I can can better explain why the solution will will deal with that. And that is to have larger containers, larger capacity containers that are there specifically for the use of small businesses and residential. And that there's not a certain time of day that there, that that's the only time that they can put trash out. If they throw something in there and it's it's loose, it'll be contained. This helps with the aesthetic downtown. It'll help with the smell. And it it just helps with with the overall capacity of that. So when we move from this overall plan into the the detailed design of the streetscape, part of that will be assessing the the gener- generation of trash, the the volume there and what size containers we have. But if we, if we miscalculate that, these are modular systems, so you can take one off this block and put it over here where we didn't have enough. That's probably a lot more than you were looking for on garbage, but we we've definitely given that a lot of thought because we understand that is a critical concern downtown. So then parking, that'd be another one hard, be hard to keep the answer brief because there's a lot that's involved. But maybe I'll just point out a few things. One, we did rely in part on a parking study that was done by Walker. They're a national parking consultant that looked at the vacancy of parking spaces downtown. And because when you, they're working directly with the city, I reached out to them. And they, they have a, uh, an estimate that includes a ten percent growth rate for downtown Bloomington, which is pretty aggressive. And their, their estimate was that even if you did not add any parking spaces anywhere downtown, there actually is, oh, I think it's something like a fifty-six percent parking vacancy at peak times. Now, I I fully acknowledge that there's a discrepancy between that study and a lot of the anecdotes that you hear about people having trouble finding parking spaces downtown and so on. So as part of this streetscape plan, we've done a couple of things. One, we have created more parking spaces for downtown than they're there. I know part of the discussion, especially with the public, was we're looking at relocating some parking spaces off of Main and Center so that we can create, make it more of a pedestrian centric corridor. But we did not, we were not net taking spaces away. We were adding. I I don't remember off the top of my head how many net parking spaces we're adding. But then we're also being strategic about where we want to invest in surface parking, for example, so. I don't remember who was talking about, maybe it was me, uh, the, around Douglas Street Lots, revamping those and that's a strategic location for BCPA, of course, but also very attractive, very, very close proximity to Main Street and the businesses there and people that might want to frequent those.
Yeah, I think in our talks, it was somewhere near thirty-two net spaces, I think, because you're adding parking on Market. And I think you're increasing, I know for sure, on Front Street and a few other locations. And then, of course, the study that you found also showed that the overwhelming majority of downtown is within three minutes or less walking distance of any public parking facility.
That's correct, and and that doesn't even take into account the availability of intermediate on-street parking spaces. Yep.
Other questions? All right, so Councilmember Bolden and then Ward.
I'm, I mentioned this when we met, but I do want to kind of get it on the record. The strategic plan for downtown twenty thirteen talked about, and I'm gonna quote, infill non-historic parcels with build, with buildings of similar character and scale. Now, I know this doesn't have to do with the streetscape, but when new buildings such as Connect Transit, they really should be built with the character you described with the, I don't want to say Roman arches, but curved elements in there to mimic, mimic the character of downtown. So, is there any way that could be put into this plan? Or does that just have to be off there and hope that somebody remembers that in the future?
Well, I was getting ready to point to you, Billy. I I think that's probably a a policy decision.
And the other thing I'll say, specific to the Connect Transit project, we will be a part of the 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 assessment of the design team, et cetera, et cetera. And those are things that we can call for as part of that work specifically to that, to that project. So, point taken, understand it for sure. We also encourage that as part of our development of 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 perhaps new buildings downtown, which may not be a lot because there's not a lot of space there. I should say in the rehab of buildings downtown, there is a historical element that has to be a part of that.
Well, there are, you know, empty parcels that could be developed, you know, with somebody's investment. And they too probably, you know, not, not with the same building techniques, but certainly reflective of what is already there. So I just wanna, I'm a history, history, history. I do have another question. Is there any opportunity to reuse some of the materials that are down there, like the light posts and certainly the signage, the directional signage?
Yes, and you will see more of this. We, we know that we owe you the appendix, which is going to be a volume two and volume three. You'll be getting that that this week. In there, we have a, um, a more thorough exploration of what all different materials and fixtures and benches and lights are going to be used. And it includes in there the reuse of certain light fixtures of benches, of trash cans.
Several of the site furnishings and light fixtures, we are recommending reuse. They're in good condition and quality materials, so.
Because in my mind, that's part of sustainability. I'm more of a conservative, I mean, conserve, conservationist rather than, you know, so, thank you. I'm very happy with the forty percent infrastructure investment. And that the project's gonna be spread over ten years so that annually, we don't have to put up, put out a lot. The chances of it getting completed are increased under those circumstances. I'm very happy with the collaboration of IDOT. I would like to push farther and I'm sure you would too. And I am happy with the consideration of all users and visitors and modes of transportation. Before I mention my major concern, I do want to remind the community that I was the one that initiated and advocated for downtown outdoor dining long before the governor gave his blessing. So I am very supportive of downtown and its economic impact. And I've also always advocated for the revitalization of the collar neighborhoods because I think that's very important also. And so the connectivity that you're trying to work on with IDOT and the the other side, you know, roads, I think it's very important. But we also have to keep in mind that we have many, many major projects that we have. Public safety, public works outside the community facilities. So we are gonna have to, and this is for the community, we are gonna have to prioritize, I mean, do priority budgeting. So, um, I'm, I'm in favor of staging it, but every time a decision is made, I want us to keep in the back of my, our mind, we have facilities to take care of, we have, you know, public works, things other than downtown that we have to take care of. We're not gonna get another dump of our funds to take care of CSOs and and that kind of thing, so. Anyway.
Thank you, Councilmember Ward. Then I think you see Councilmember Montney and then Becker.
First off, thank you so much for all the hard work that's gone into this. From all of the people who have already been mentioned tonight, this is really exciting to see all the dreaming and the ideas finally coming to something that we can now really sink our teeth into, if you will. I I have a couple of questions with regard to mostly infrastructure. The first one, though, has to do with the pavers. And as we talked in our, our smaller group conversations on Friday, Mike, I thought you, you really kind of allayed some of my concerns about the pavers with regard to accessibility. When you were talking about sort of the, the, what's beneath the pavers. And I wonder if you could, could share that in a more clear way so that perhaps that would maybe put paid to some of the concerns that that people might have about accessibility issues.
So, I'll describe it this way, the, the three worst things for pavement is water, water and water. So anytime you're doing pavement design, you want to get the water out of there. And so in the case of the pavers, there, there is the, the, and you, you correct me if I say something wrong, Neil, but there's the clay pavers themselves, but they're on a bed of, I think, twenty inches of.
Roughly twenty, roughly twenty.
Inches of aggregate.
Twenty inches of aggregate, which is much more rock than you have under conventional pavement. And a lot of that has to do, and then an underdrain underneath it. So this is a much more robust system in terms of drainage than regular pavement that might have six to ten inches of rock under it. And the reason that is is because of some of the concerns that have been brought up about accessibility. Want to make sure that it's not just accessible when it's constructed, but that it's accessible for the long run. We talked about these are durable materials, but you also don't want to see them move because of free thaw action. And when you get that water out, when you have that much rock underneath it, that is, that is a really stable platform that's gonna be dry. And yeah, is that helpful?
Yes, it's very helpful and I wanted to, I wanted to hear more about the, the, um, the depth of the, what's underneath it. So thank you for, for sharing that. And that sort of brings me to the second big issue for me in a, in a positive way from what I'm hearing with regard to the infrastructure because, so I represent Ward seven, which was very hard hit in the floods of June twenty twenty-one. And some of the neighborhoods directly west of downtown, right on the, right on the edge of downtown were some of the most hard-hit areas in the city with regard to the combined sewer issues and the, the flooding related to that summer. And I was very excited to hear and would love for you to, to maybe expand a little bit on the description for the public. With what impact is that gonna have, particularly Phase Two was the, the thing that caught my attention as well as the pavers. How does all this play in? Can you expand on that a little bit? For people who don't live in downtown, but maybe who had sewage coming up out of their basement and are still waiting for some resolution to that. Why should my neighbors care?
So, the Main Street, you should get past the courthouse, it it drops down in elevation as you travel north. And so down at the bottom where, uh, where we've been talking about having the North Main Plaza, it's actually a perfect opportunity to to, to, to help alleviate the, the drain, the flooding issues that you're talking about because it's a low spot of downtown and because it intersects a very large, I want to say like seventy-inch diameter sewer that's going through there. And so the, by, by putting in underground detention there, what you're doing is you're, you're, you're collecting all of the, the stormwater that's coming down the hill, everything that's in that watershed. And then you're, you're, you're slowly releasing it into the sewer long after the peak discharge has already come through there. And, and when you slowly release that discharge, that's why you need the big, big chamber system to give that place, give it the water a place to fill up. But, yeah, between having that detention system and between the, the combined sewer separation that we're doing in downtown, all of that will directly contribute to improvements with flooding and combined sewer overflows on the west end of town.
Because stuff rolls downhill. Because stuff rolls downhill. So, thank you for that.
Okay, Councilmember Montney?
I just wanted to reiterate, um, the appreciation for clarifying what infrastructure work we were already going to have to do. And I know as we spoke previously, if we are under a consent order by Illinois EPA for decoupling these combined sewers, then we need to call that out intentionally and separate that from what people perceive when they hear about the Streetscape project generally as being one that prioritizes beautification, because there are a lot of folks who, you know, really are looking at that price tag and are struggling. Um, so, um, I, I look forward to continuing to hear more about that. Um, that thirty-nine cents on the dollar that was talked about for the infrastructure work directionally, what does that look like per phase? Um, you know, in the first phase, is that, um, you know, really at that level of distribution? Or, you know, I'm sure there's a lot of volatility in that across the phases that have been laid out here. So I'd like to, uh, know particularly for the front-end projects, um, what's, um, what's going on there? Um, secondly, the museum square area, which I understand is like third or, and fourth and fifth, kind of in your phasing. Um, perhaps, um, you know, I'm hearing due to complexities of working with, um, two different governing bodies that have, uh, ownership in that area. Um, you know, if, if there, if those conversations need to take place and that would have felt, fell somewhere else on the priority list, then I think those conversations should, um, take place. And I don't know that any of them have. Perhaps it's just being perceived as being very difficult. And for, um, the strong advocates of this project generally, um, at the price tag we're talking about, um, and, um, you know, that price tag, of course, is you just Google streetscapes. You see how much, um, the aspiration has not been met with the budget reality for those communities who have gone before us. Um, we're looking at, um, being asked to approve a fiscal year twenty-five budget that is fourteen percent increased over the prior year without any dollars allocated toward, um, the early phase of this work. And so for the public, um, you know, who are so strong, strongly advocating for this investment, um, please look at those other documents and ask where, um, and how do we make reductions in order to pay for it? Uh, because when you look at that fourteen percent distributed over virtually a flat population, um, with the federal funds drying up, as Councilmember Boland mentioned, um, you know, we just need to really look at all of these competing priorities and make sure that, you know, we understand what we're choosing and what that means in terms of the opportunity cost and what we should choose not to do in order to do this. Um, so thank you again. I really have appreciated the conversations with, with you all, um, very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Becker.
Uh, also thank you, and I wanted to focus on the, the financials again, surprise. When we talked about this, uh, last week, we talked a little bit about the other methods of funding. And having the plan in place was, was a, a first step for grant processing and so forth. And, and I liked, obviously I liked your comments about the budget and, you know, the, taking the infrastructure piece out and then looking at the annual average investment, notwithstanding Sheila's comment about that first-year big chunk or that first-phase big chunk. What do we expect the grant numbers to be? Or, and I know you can't have a crystal ball, but I mean, are you expecting the ability to potentially see ten million in grant money, fifteen million, or two million? You know, can you give us an order of magnitude? Because that changes, you go from sixty to forty-five pretty quickly with the first piece of infrastructure. If you get another fifteen in grant money, well, now you're down to thirty spread across. Now it's down to five million a year. Do we have any idea where that's going to be?
I have thoughts, but I'm nervous to share them because, as you say, you know, it's my, my crystal ball is more of a snow globe.
Yeah, we won't hold you to it. I just want perspective.
Well, I'll, I'll give you an example. Again, no guarantees, but this part, so we, we have, um, there's a gal on our team, uh, who, she's a former congressional aide. She is very tied into, um, helping us, uh, sift out what are good grant opportunities? What are good public funding opportunities for this project? Um, what different pieces and parts of the entire program are good candidates? And, um, there, there are, there are parts of this project particularly, particularly related to, uh, the highway that is just checking every box there in perfect alignment with a, a RACE grant. A RACE grant is up to twenty-five million dollars of federal money. And Ally has been very successful at writing those grants. I think she's got the last, last two here.
In the state.
In the state, yeah. Um, not all grants are that big. Um, yeah, but, so, I, I know there, there's all, there's all sizes. There, there's, there's state ones, um, Main Street programs. There's, uh, even OSLAD grants for maybe some of the, 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 uh, park, uh, um, uh, Withers Park, uh. Yeah, I, you're, I, I don't know. I, I would say it'd be very disappointing if you're only getting something in the, in the neighborhood of two million dollars. I think this program, um, just is, is aligned well, far too well with federal priorities for funding to, to hope for less than that.
Thank you. And then the, the other perspective, again, when we first started talking about this, several of us did ask that we wanted bite-sized chunks rather than committing a huge dollar amount. So thank you for really doing a good job, in my opinion, of phasing the approach and for phasing it in such a way that if you do step one, something isn't left hanging on step two. You can vote and prioritize on, on that. I do think it is very important to, again, back up what Sheila said, is that these costs are going to grow over time and we are going to have to make those prioritization decisions as we go. So, you know, having the framework important, I like the framework that we have. I do think there's a lot of prioritization and we shouldn't count any of it as a given. But we should go each step and look at, can this step be done more efficiently? Instead of twelve, can we do this step or with alternate suggestions? Can we do this step for eight because we don't have the money for twelve this year, as an example, right?
Yeah, if I may, if I could quickly underscore that point. Um, so you guys have seen the phasing map with ten separate projects. Any one of those you could pick off at any time. None of them are dependent on, on doing the one before it. Um, and also, you probably noticed, we do not have a schedule associated with the phasing plan. That was very intentional and it's to keep us flexible for, um, for funding opportunities that come up, um, for development opportunities that, that, that may arise. Uh, so while we were very thoughtful about, you know, it makes sense to do this one first and this one second, um, the, the, the plan is intentionally flexible to break off any one of those ten projects at any time.
Thank you.
Just one additional quick question. Um, with the comparison, you know, with normal, which is something that comes up a lot, as you can imagine. I, I'm sure that there are those here who know the, the numbers that, that I don't know. But I, I think there was very direct, um, federal participation in a significant monetary fashion, um, that enabled their Streetscape. It wasn't, I think, um, that investment wasn't, wasn't really all local. I think maybe sixty-plus million dollars from the federal government. I'm, I'm not sure what the number was, but just, just for awareness there.
Thank you. Did you have something? We're, we're about to run out of time here. Um, I don't know if we want maybe five more minutes and that would be it.
I just have a quick response.
One, two, you have a response, he has something, and I know Tim wanted to say something, so we'll probably. Five minutes, okay.
I'll make a motion to extend this discussion for five minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, second, okay.
Councilmember Kearns? Too many mics.
Yes.
Councilmember Boland?
Yes.
Councilmember Montney? Councilmember Danenberger?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hendrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Yes.
Awesome, we have five more minutes. Are we going to add that to the ticker, clicker, thingy? All right, awesome. All right, Councilmember Crumpler?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I guess I probably want to address this to Billy and Mi- Mike and the team as well. You know, some of us remember that we've had previous downtown studies and plans, um, that fizzled out. While Streetscape is detailed and ambitious in ways that the others are not, you know, council members will change. Leadership, it's on, um, at the staff level, um, may change as this general, generational project goes forward. You know, and, and I, I want to ask, if we approve Streetscape, how do we ensure a continuity of support so that each phase can stand alone and be viewed as a success, even if the other phases, for whatever reasons, are not completed? Does that make sense?
Yes. A, a couple of things. One, I think, I know that this plan was created in a way, as Mike said, that one phase is not dependent upon the other. Um, and so there, there's, there, there's that whereby if you do phases one, two, three, or one, two, or whatever, and conditions change, and you decide that you need to delay other parts, you've still done a significant amount of work to improve our downtown. And so there, there's that, that the, each of these phases are intertwined but independent. So I think that's very, very important. The other thing I honestly believe is that showing is proving. And I think that by showing that we can do this work and by showing how great it can be for our downtown, there is impetus to continue the work because I think that the downtown folks will say, hey, we love this, could keep doing it. I think the computer, the community will say, hey, we love this, keep doing it. The other thing I'll say is that, at the, it's, hopefully this doesn't sound conceited. I mean, we've done this before. We've done it in other places and it's worked, and we've shown that it works and we, we, we know how to do it. And so I think that matters. The experience of having done this matters. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Boland. You have twenty-five seconds.
Um, yeah, to your comment, um, downtown Normal pretty much got most of its funding from the federal government for high-speed rail. So it's pretty much tied around the, um, train station. And then, of course, the, um, the hotels decided to invest because, you know, twenty thousand students and homecoming and all that type of thing, student move-in. Um, so that is why, you know, the money was invested and successful. But the primary government funding was because of the high-speed rail.
Okay, thank you. Uh, City Manager Gleason?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just to wrap this up, really, I think the community is wanting to know what happens next. Uh, we had the presentation this evening. Um, we'll have, uh, the resources available to the community. And then what comes before council, not next meeting on the twenty-fifth, because there's a lot of spring break vacancies. So we'll call this a purposeful, uh, pause. And, uh, this is going to come back in front of council for adoption on April eighth. So the very first, uh, council meeting in, uh, uh, April. That's also going to be the night that we're going to, uh, hopefully adopt, uh, the FY twenty-five budget. Uh, so it's going to be a busy night. I think, uh, quite a few, uh, victory laps to be taken by, uh, this community, this council. Also on, uh, April eighth is going to be a separate agenda item, and that's going to be the kickoff project that we're going to bring before council, uh, for, uh, hopefully the approval of that. Something else that I need to say, and it was, i- it's a blend of the comments that were made to, uh, tonight by the elected, definitely, uh, by those, uh, that presented. But I would be remiss as the city manager of this community now for the past six years to bring something in front of the community, in front of my council that I work for, and sort of tease the community with something that, uh, is just not an option or is just not possible. And I respect the fact that ultimately the council makes that, uh, decision on the adoption and then also on the approval of the kickoff project that's going to come on, uh, April eighth. So the fact that we are having this conversation, I firmly believe that we have the resources available to do this. And again, by design, this is a phased project, a phased approach that we build on the success of the phase that's completed before we even consider what may come next. You know, we look at the current needs in the community. And where I sit today at the tail end of presenting the FY twenty-five budget, I feel that this is very possible, or else we wouldn't be having the public conversation. So thank you, Mayor.
Well, thank you. I want to thank all of you for, uh, the tremendous amount of work that you've done. I, I really liked the plan personally and as someone who has also talked about infrastructure, uh, I'm very excited to see that there is a, uh, a strong focus on it. But it's also aesthetically pleasing and so I think it allows us to do, uh, to do both. So want to thank you, want to thank all the stakeholders. Uh, when we started, uh, with this and talked about the initial, uh, study, um, I know it, it was, I think it was a five or four vote. Uh, but here we are now, you know, a year later, and you've done tremendous work. So I really appreciate it and looking forward to the next steps. Thank you. Okay, now we're going to, uh, move on to item B, the presentation, uh, of the Connect Transit, uh, Preliminary Budget Financials and Annual Report on Transit Operations as requested by the Administration Department. And I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Gleason for introductory remarks, and then David Brown will connect transit.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, uh, and to the community. Uh, tonight, we're going to talk about the, uh, Connect Transit, uh, buzzet, budget presentation. We have a PowerPoint, uh, that David is going to walk through. I know that we have, uh, the Connect Transit team here, along with some of the, uh, board members, uh, that are also present, uh, in this. Uh, we're going to talk about the expanded services, uh, just many things that Connect Transit does for, uh, the Bloomington-Normal communities and how we're very much a part of that. Separate to this, uh, we'll probably see at the committee of the whole in April, just an update on where we stand with the, uh, Connect Transit Transfer Station, uh, here in the downtown, very much connected to, uh, uh, the previous agenda item. And, uh, uh, not necessarily, uh, that conversation for this evening, uh, but an update is going to come next month. David?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers, and, uh, thank you, Tim. Uh, before I start, I just wanted to acknowledge, as, as Tim did, we do have a couple of folks here, um, from our board. We have, uh, Trustee Linda Foster. She represents Bloomington, as does Chairman Ryan Whitehouse. Um, I also have some staff here. I have Brady Lang, he's our procurement director. Uh, Pat Kebrich, he's our finance director, and Charlie Bussi, who's our maintenance manager. Um, I also want to acknowledge too, you may have seen it, uh, we, we did send out a press release, but we also had some, some social media that, um, today is National Transit Employee Appreciation Day. So I started this morning cooking breakfast for our employees at four-thirty AM, and here I am now. So, uh, if I nod off, you'll, you'll understand why that is. I want to start with our annual report. So what I really want to do is take a look back at twenty-twenty-three, look at where we are now, and then look at our budget for the future. So our budget is our biz, business plan for twenty-twenty-five. Next slide, please, and the other. All right, I have a lot of, uh, intro slides, apparently. Next one, please. So we have three separate services, as you probably saw on the first slide. We have our fixed route service, we have our connect mobility service, and we have our connect flex service. So this is our fixed route service, our big buses that you see. Uh, the fixed route service is our, our most popular service in terms of, of the number of riders that it carries. And you can see that service continued to grow. Um, the bottom line is twenty, uh, just verify what that is. Uh, I believe it's twenty-twenty-three. Um, the orange line, I'm sorry, twenty-twenty-two, the orange line is twenty-twenty-three, and, uh, the silver line is our current, twenty-twenty-four. Um, January dropped a little bit primarily because of a couple of reasons. It was very cold, ISU closed down for a couple of days, and we just didn't carry that many passengers. But you can see on average, it is higher than it was last year, our ridership. Next slide, please. When we look at our fixed routes, um, we look at our ridership and our efficiency. So, uh, efficiency is measured in passengers per hour, and you- And you can see this is just a ridership slide. Our highest ridership is a Redbird, followed by a number of others, and that scales down. As we compare one to the other, we look at the number of hours that that particular route serves, where it's serving, and how we might be able to improve the efficiency on those. So this is something that we do take a look at quarterly. This is where we are today. Next slide, please. Connect Mobility is really a stellar performer, and I would say that we are somewhat, and you'll see in our budget, somewhat of a victim of our own success in this. Next slide, please. Our ridership continues to grow. Again, this is 2022 to 2023 and 2024. Those numbers are significant. We are well past where we were in COVID. We're about 110-plus percent of pre-COVID numbers, and we continue to grow. Next slide, please. You can see where we were in 2014 versus where we are today in 2024. That ridership was, you know, increasing steadily, dropped significantly for COVID, and really has gotten great gains. And I really attribute that to our staff, our ability to provide a service that is needed in the community, but also a good service. We don't advertise a service, so the gains in ridership are really a result of word of mouth. They're also a result of an expansion of service that we had in 2021. We lowered our fare. We had a tiered rate fare. But our one fare for all took it down to the same rate as the rest of our service. So for $1.25, people are able to travel throughout the entire service area, which is the corporate limits of Bloomington and Normal. Next slide, please. This is also where we look at efficiency and how we can actually get more people on the bus so that we have more trips per hour. You can see our efficiency has steadily grown, and that's because we're analyzing that really almost on a daily basis to see how we could have improved on the day prior. Sometimes it's just not possible, again, weather and things like that. But we are constantly looking at how to best utilize our vehicles and get people on the service while maintaining a quality service. Next slide, please. Our expectations for mobility, though, is that that will continue to increase. We saw, to date, about a 20% increase in over last year. We budgeted about a 12.5% increase. So we know that our budget, we under-budgeted for mobility this year. We do have some opportunities to continue operating that service with the same quality. So we're not affected by that budget change. However, we're looking at a 27% increase over last year or next year, or for this, yeah, over this year for next year. So you'll see that in our budget numbers as well. But what this slide really shows is that the number of people with disabilities continue to increase from 2000, 2010, 2020, based on census numbers. And the number of people aging continues to increase. So you can see that on the right-hand side, where the blue line, the upper side of that blue line, is really the number of population in those age categories. So I think we've always known that the baby boomer, that bump, will continue to move up, and that's affecting our service. Next slide, please. So this is our newest service. This is the one that we just rolled out in July in Councilmember Bowlin's zone. Next slide, please. And it's doing tremendously well. To date, we have about 33,000 trips that were taken by the service. We find that relatively significant, given that it is a new service. It's something that was introduced to the community that had never been done here before. It's an on-demand service that people hail by their phone, similar to an Uber and Lyft. But the critical mass in this is that it is a shared ride service. So we're trying to make this as efficient as possible rather than a taxi-type trip. Currently, we have about 4.5 passengers an hour. That's less than fixed route, but more than our mobility service. You can see we started charging a fare in January, which is on the right-hand side. When we started charging a fare in January, our ridership did fall a little bit. That's just really a frequency of ridership. Next slide, please. You'll see the number of riders and consistent riders continue to go up. So the dark blue line is those that have returned to the service. The light blue line is those that are new to the service. So every month, we continue to get new people riding. They may not be riding as frequently, but they are riding and returning to the service as well. Next slide, please. The experience. Now, this one's a little hard to read, but what I really wanted to share in this is a couple of things. So the bottom number, 47.4, that's the number of trips that are actually shared. So 47% of the time, people are riding with someone else in that vehicle, at least one other person. Another critical number to me in this is that 4.9. That's our average rider experience rating. So that's a 4.9 out of 5. People are experiencing a good trip, and they are commenting on how good that trip is. The average pickup time is about 10 minutes. The average trip time looks like just around 9. Next slide, please. So our financial performance, and this is also something I'm pleased to report. Next slide, please. In fiscal year '22, we had a budget of $15 million. We spent nearly all of that, 96% of it. But we also were able to take in more revenues based on some contracts and some other things that we had established back in '22. In fiscal year '23, we were also under budget. We were at 95% of our budget. Still got everything done that we anticipated doing and also increased revenue due to some contractual contractual elements, as well as an advertising contract that was very favorable to us. Next slide, please. I was asked to present a five-year forecast, and, you know, in our world, looking at a five-year forecast is very challenging. There's a lot of things that are in play, grants being one of them. But you can see in this forecast, the top line is what our budget is as we are presenting it tonight. The second row over is this same level of service, but for a full year next year. So you'll get what I'm talking about in just a minute. But we're proposing that we start some connect flex zones later next year that are reflected as a full years of service in this one. The red boxes that you can see around federal and state funding. Our federal funding is not capped. We typically get more federal funding. But we currently get about $4.8 million for operating capital a year from federal formula funds. You'll see in '26, if we continue to grow at the same rate, we will cap out of those federal funds in '26 if they remain the same. Now, again, they have continued to grow as our funding and our ridership grows. And that funding is based on a number of inputs into the formula. But ridership is a significant one. Our state funding has been capped probably for the last four years, and we're running against that cap in fiscal year '27. That doesn't mean that we will not have the funding. As a matter of fact, the state is very aware of it. They're trying to fix the fiscal cliff situation that the city of Chicago is having, the RTA region. And other systems in downstate are also in a similar position. So we're working very closely with the state to have a fix for this well before we run into those problems. With the federal, you'll see in just a few minutes that every year, we don't expend all of our federal dollars. So what we've been doing is we've been socking those away. So when we look at that federal cap in '26, that, again, doesn't mean that we will run out of money in '26. That means that we'll be digging, we'll be diving into that little reserve that we've been developing over the years. I think that we've been very responsible with our funding, and that allows us to continue operating. You'll see that the town and the city share is not increasing over the next, what, six-year period that I have up on the board? But some other things are, primarily the other category, the very bottom of that list. We anticipate with the transit center having some lease space, that we'll be able to draw some revenue. We're also looking at some other revenue opportunities, starting in fiscal year '29. And that, those will just offset our operating budget. We're also looking at ways to decrease our operating budget in terms of utilities and things like that, due to our electric buses and some other things. So, you know, while I can't, I also have a snow globe as a crystal ball. Forecasting, we know that we have some things in process now that will start paying dividends late in the next five years. Next slide, please. I was asked to discuss our public outreach efforts. And, you know, as you know, all of our board meetings are open to the public and have a period for public comments, similar to the city council meetings. We had multiple public input sessions for the Sapphire Route. We had a slight change in that. Next slide, please. And then also, we've done public safety events. We have pass partnerships, and we've done a lot of other community outreach. So we are definitely part of this community. We're trying to improve the lives of not only our passengers, but those people who don't ride as well. Next slide, please. So this is our draft budget, and I say it's a draft because our board has not yet approved this budget. Next slide, please. Our budget is really driven on two things. We're a labor-intensive budget, and with labor also comes miles. So the number of hours we provide is labor. The number of miles we provide equals maintenance. Those are kind of the two main drivers. Next slide, please. So we're reallocating in this budget our hours and miles. What we found is that our fixed route, we returned to peak service earlier this year, peak service being the peak travel times in the morning and the afternoons. And this year, we returned earlier in the year and then had to back off in January due to some fleet issues. What we found those, our ridership and mobility continues to grow. And with every new rider, there's new hours and miles because it's not on a fixed schedule. So we're reallocating the hours from fixed route to mobility to support that system. And then we're adding some microtransit service at the end of next year, and we're estimating two zones right now. We're also with changes downtown. We're looking at providing a parking shuttle for the downtown businesses so that as the downtown continues to change in its parking, we will be there to take people to where they need to go in downtown. Next slide, please. So I've discussed this. I don't really have too much time. But the current schedule that we're on is a reduced peak schedule, so you can see what those changes are. Next slide, please. One of the reasons for justifying that is, again, we do look at the efficiency. When we were running no peak throughout 2023 because we were short on drivers, our efficiency was about 20.32 passengers an hour. When we started peak service again in 2024, that efficiency dropped. So we were increasing hours faster than we were increasing passengers. We feel that even with the increase or the reduction in service, last year, we had a 17.9% increase in ridership. This year is 8.7 already. So we're continuing to grow, and we feel that by reallocating those dollars to mobility and connect flex, we're serving people with unmet needs right now. Next slide, please. So our draft budget is about 7% higher than what it was in 2024. You can see where the breakdown of those 7% are. Unfortunately, you know, we are a small staff, so what we have is some professional service needs. We know what we don't know, and sometimes we have to hire that talent. We do a zero-based budget, so we look at what we did last year, see if we need to do it again this year, and we look ahead for what we need to do next year. So we're constantly evaluating these expenses rather than just putting a percentage on each one. Next slide, please. You can see our revenue. Most of it is, again, from our downstate program. 65% comes from the state of Illinois, 20 from the federal government. Bloomington share is about 4.5%. Contract fares primarily ISU is about 3.4% and so on. We are anticipating a slight increase in fares, again, because of ridership growth. And advertising, we're not anticipating too much more. We have some other opportunities, but those opportunities haven't come to fruition yet. Again, our state appropriation right now is 15.2, and our federal appropriation is 4.8. So, you know, for a 20 million-plus budget, you're investing about 4.5%, $900,000. Next slide, please. Our capital budget is the same. Most of our capital is done through grants. The projects that we have up on the board there are projects that are funded through federal and state grants. So for, let's see, I actually calculated out your particular investment. With a 2.9% investment, which is what Bloomington invests in our capital, for a 2.9 investment, you get about a $27 million return, which is pretty significant. And we're really proud of the way that we're able to engage our public, engage our elected officials and get the support that we need that can then support this community. Next slide, please. Thank you for supporting Connect Transit.
Thank you.
I look forward to your question.
David, yes, and we're going to open up for questions. So we'll start with Councilmember Motney and then Councilmember Kumppler. Could you put up the time also? Thank you.
So David, thank you for the information you shared tonight. Do you know, what's the difference in the cost per ride or cost per trip for Connect Flex versus your traditional bus routes?
I can say the cost per trip for a fixed bus route is about $6 per trip. The cost per trip on Flex is about 15, and the cost per trip for mobility is about 34.
So at 20 riders per hour across the distribution of all of your buses, it's still that much lower in cost than your Connect Flex trips? Just wanted to understand that. If the Connect Flex, and that includes the cost of the capital investment of the buses they're riding in? I mean, that's fully loaded?
That is not fully loaded because those funds are grant funds that we have one-off. So we don't add depreciation or anything in our budget for those things.
So if you, you know, were considering that kind of fully loaded, you know, what's the most efficient and effective way to move people who need public transport across the community? And I guess I'm going to frame that with the statistic you put up here that shows, you know, in the 3% range for fares relative to the overall operating cost for Connect Transit. By the way, do you have a target for what that should be? I mean, I've read that on average, in many public transportation situations, they're looking for about 15 to 20% fare versus subsidy?
Yeah, in smaller systems like ours, it tends to be less than 10%. So 10% is, it tends to be a guideline. And again, this is a budgetary figure, and in the past few years, we have exceeded that budgetary figure. So in terms of efficiency, in terms of efficiency, the fixed route service is always the most efficient. It's there when scheduled. I know the buses cost a lot, but they also last a long time. We keep those buses 14 years versus we anticipate that Connect Flex only lasting about five years. In a Connect Flex-type bus, we have component changes much more often because it's a light-duty bus and heavy-duty service.
And how do you define efficiency? Is it simply ridership?
It's actually ridership per hour. So in terms of, for instance, one of the routes that had the lowest ridership is our Red Express. Well, that Red Express only runs in the morning and the afternoon. It doesn't run in the midday. So it has far fewer hours, but, and you can see that in the ridership. If I were to put up a slide for efficiency, that route would be about middle of our pack in terms of efficiency. So it's the number of hours we run, and we're always evaluating whether or not those hours are appropriate versus the number of riders who are using it during those hours.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Kumppler?
Thank you, Mayor. David, you know, thanks so much for the presentation this evening. Being a person who really likes charts and graphs, I mean, I really liked the way you were able to include so much information in this presentation tonight. You know, one thing I wondered, when I got to page 24, the proposed budget justification, I guess I was expecting you to see a bit more detailed narrative, contextualizing those two bullet points. And I wonder if you could take a few minutes and just talk about how you would maybe approach those goals and what indicators you would use to assess whether those goals are met or not.
Sure, let me take a look.
Thank you.
Let me remind myself.
No, 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 you know, and I think, you know, for your final approval, I think it would really enhance your report and budget presentation.
Sure, sure. And quite honestly, my board will get a lot more detail because I have a little more time to talk to them about that. But so as we're looking at those, we constantly want to drive those numbers up. So when they start falling, we start looking at ways to improve those numbers. And that's done by a number of ways. done by a number of ways. So the routes that are underperforming, we can either apply marketing to those routes to try to get people to ride those routes. We can reduce the hours so that when people aren't riding, and we can actually determine by time of day when people are riding. And we're actually going through that exercise now to see if we're running the right hours for each route. We have to remember that this is a network of routes as well. So it's not a one-off. It's, each route doesn't run independently. It connects to one another. So even if somebody isn't riding at a particular time, that route will still need to connect to another that allows people to get across the town. So those are the types of things that we're always looking at. From a justification perspective, again, we were increasing service when we had, increasing ridership when we had the least amount of service last year, and when we applied additional service this year, that ridership didn't follow. So we feel that by reallocating those hours to mobility for the people who need it the most, and Connect Flex for those areas that are currently underserved, we feel that we're doing the best for the city and the town.
Thank you, that really helps. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Yeah, thank you, David, for this presentation. I was curious, I saw in the capital projects that there was a line item for maybe seven-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars for building better bus stops.
Correct.
I was curious if you could speak to that. I know that there's been discussions and organizations that have helped in the past as far as benches and such, so I'm excited to hear what that's going to look like.
Sure, I'm happy to talk about that. It's a project that was started, it was initiated before I started, and we received some federal grant funds. We matched those grant funds with state dollars, so we're trying to improve the bus stops throughout the area. Now, what we also recognize is that not every bus stop has passenger traffic. Sometimes just the bus stop is there for people to catch it. So we're evaluating that program, but what that means is that we pour pads, depending on the number of riders, we'll put a shelter or a semi-seat, those little blue seats that are on the poles that you see. We have spoken to some other organizations, potentially doing an adopt-a-stop type program that they could put benches at those locations based on landowners' approval. We don't own the land for the bus stop. We actually have to get an easement from all the landowners, and we work very closely with the city to get those easements. So, you know, it's not a matter of just putting it where we want. We have to, we, there's a lot of negotiation that goes on. But we're looking forward to expanding that program, making it accessible for people that use mobility devices to easily, more easily board the bus. And those that can't or can't get to a bus stop, we have Connect Mobility, and in certain areas like the southwest side, Connect Flex. You're welcome.
Councilmember Ward? Ward, I say, are you, no, are you?
Yeah, I have two questions.
Okay.
Yeah. The first one had to do, did you say what areas you're looking at to expand Flex? And sorry if I didn't hear that.
I did not, and I kind of didn't on purpose because we're still really vetting what those zones will look like. One is based on low ridership on one of the routes, on one of the fixed routes, and another is based on just an area that doesn't receive service but really desperately needs it. So there are two areas that we're looking at. We'll probably be proposing those to the board early next fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. And then the other question that I had had to do with, it's sort of related to the adopt-a-bus stop, but one of the issues that some of my neighbors have raised has to do with trash, that sometimes around some of the bus stops, there are no trashcans, and people leave a lot of trash, and it looks trashy, frankly. And so I'm just wondering what thought you have about that and what's being done and what partnerships there could perhaps be?
And I think the adopt-a-bus stop program certainly solves some of that, but that won't happen for a while, and I'm not sure that every bus stop will be adopted. So we have spoken about that internally, about the things that we can do to better police those areas, everything from having drivers report it and then having our maintenance staff manage it, to just, you know, having regular maintenance staff checks that go out every day. We have over four hundred stops, so it's not, you know, the simplest thing to manage, but we think that we could, we certainly can do a better job, and I appreciate that.
This is a dumb question, but do the fixed route buses have trashcans on them?
They have very small little trash containers, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's right up in front, so it's very easy for somebody to get to.
Okay, Councilmember Bowlin, you have twenty minutes, but don't feel compelled to use all of it.
No, I don't have that many questions. Well, first of all, I want you to explain for everybody how the city's capital contribution and operations contribution helps? Is it related to DOPA or, you know, go on?
It's directly related to our downstate operating assistance program, so that's dope. For every, let's see, so they cover sixty-five percent of our expenses. That means that we, the more we have in local funds, they will match that with sixty-five percent additional. So I wish I had a good mathematical ratio that I could give you, but basically, what you're doing by investing those dollars is being able to allow us to get more state dollars. That's on the, on the state side, on the operation side. On the federal, on the capital side, the feds tend to fund twenty to fifty percent of a project, I'm sorry, fifty to eighty percent of a project, leaving fifty to twenty percent for local funds. That local match is almost always needed in a grant fund, and we tend not to be able to draw those funds down unless we have that local match. So as we continue to move towards that cap in state dollars, we've been using those state dollars as actually our local match because we weren't using them for operating. As we reach that cap, the, those local dollars are much more important. And again, we have been spending very responsibly, so we've been socking those away that we can continue to do it without asking for more.
Okay. I was asking for educational reasons. I mean, not just for me.
Sure.
You know, I kind of know this, right?
Oh, I would hope.
And in twenty-twenty-six, you're going to start lease initiatives? Could you explain that?
Sure. So as part of our downtown Transit Center, we've made it very clear that we would like to have some sort of lease revenue so that we can offset the cost. So we'll be building a retail-type space, and we're looking for partners that would move into that and pay a lease for the use of that space. That'll offset those operating costs because we anticipate that with that new center, we will have additional staff, we'll have additional maintenance costs, things like that that we'll need to pay. We would rather not burden the city and the town with those costs, so we're looking to offset those.
Okay. And could you clarify again with the effect of the Flex and mobility, how it affects the fixed route? Is it, which is it, like chicken and egg? Is it the reduced fixed route is benefiting the mobility and Flex, or is mobility and Flex having to pick up because of a reduced fixed?
No, it's actually the former. So we're keeping the schedule that we have today, which is a reduced peak hour service. We ran it all through twenty-twenty-three, and we started again in January of this year. We will be reallocating those hours and miles to mobility and Flex, primarily mobility because mobility continues to grow. Mobility is an eligibility-based service, so it can't really pick up the people that connect, that connect transit. The fixed route service isn't picking up because they would have to be eligible for that service. The primary issue with mobility is, first, there are more people with disabilities. Second, we're serving a much larger service area than we did in twenty-twenty, twenty-nineteen. So the expansion of the service area, the frequency of ridership based on the lower cost, and the fact that, what was I going to say? I lost it.
It's late.
Yeah, it is. Those are really the reasons why we need to shift to mobility to continue that service. The ADA has some very specific requirements, and we can't deny trips on that service. So even if we don't have vehicles and drivers available, we need to get them available, and that's why we're budgeting as we are.
Well, one of the reasons I was asking, your list of reduced service, where it's like went from every thirty minutes to sixty minutes, are all in Bloomington. So I feel like an orphan. And can you share where the new Flex might be going?
I can't right now. Again, we're still trying to determine that. We are looking at an area in Bloomington and an area in Normal, though. And as a matter of fact, where the service is going to sixty minutes along the Aqua and the Silver, both of those are served, both of those routes are in the microtransit zone as well. So in that case, microtransit, our existing zone, would pick up those additional passengers.
Well, the Flex is very successful, and I really appreciate that you brought service toward it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other questions. David, thank you very much for your presentation and looking forward to seeing you next month.
All right. Me too, thank you.
We got to move on to city manager's discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Very brief. Catherine, if you would, play the video.
Get ready for a summer filled with fun and excitement as the Bloomington Parks and Recreation Department gears up for Summer 2024 Classes, Programs, and Events. Registration begins April tenth for residents and April seventeenth for non-residents. Don't miss out on the adventure. From sports leagues to arts workshops, there's something for everyone in our lineup. Whether you're a fitness enthusiast, an aspiring artist, or simply looking to have a good time, we've got you covered. And for our fifty-five-plus crowd, the Miller Park Adult Center is the place to be. This accessible facility caters to the needs and interests of McLean County's residents. With amenities like billiards, game tables, a library, TV, computer zones, and card tables, there's no shortage of ways to socialize and stay active. Don't let the summer pass you by. Join us for a season of excitement and connection with Bloomington Parks and Recreation. Don't forget to secure your spot and let the adventures begin.
Thank you very much, Catherine. New employees. We hired in billing and finance, Tiara Edwards, and also Senior Civil Engineer and Operations and Engineering Chad Langen, and Critical Hire for that department. This is one that I'm going to say that we've been pushing a year and a half. Had a couple of hires that we could have made, but felt that we would have been settling, and Chad's background is going to be a huge asset for that department. Then also, on March twenty-fifth, just a reminder that FY25 public hearing will come before the community, so that will be presented. And then, again, that rolls into an April eighth adoption. And then also, going back to the Streetscape presentation, just very quickly, I know that you see myself, the Deputy City Manager, and some of these other faces, and there's a lot of people behind the scenes, but two biggies that I'd be remiss in not commenting to, and that's Phil Allen, that very much involved in this, and then also Kelly Pfeifer in Economic Community Development. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. This seems like a good time to adjourn. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Bowlin, second by Councilmember Hendricks, all those in favor, just any file by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. See you next Monday.